I'm sorry to startle everybody, okay. Sorry about that. Welcome to the Select Board meeting here at Town Hall Memorial Hall, Tuesday, May 23rd, the time being 6:04. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. If you are able, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us. We will move to open forum, I understand.
Hi. My name is Jen Kirkland, I'm the Recreation Director here in town. I was just coming before you tonight at open forum to let you know about the block party that we have planned for June 30th. It's the annual block party that we have every year. So it'll be held this year Friday night, June 30th, from 5:30 to 9:00, down at Bay State Common. All of the traditional events are scheduled, hayrides, pony rides, bounce house, a lot of local vendors, food trucks, food vendors, things like that. So we're looking forward to a great evening, but I did just want to let you know, I have obviously been in touch with the Police Department, Fire Department, DPW, they're all aware and on board. So I just wanted to bring that before you to make sure you were aware as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks for doing it.
Anyone else? Okay. We will move forward to the Town Manager's Report.
Thanks. So for our updates, we wanted to update you on the Explorer Post. So as the Board's aware, the Explorer Post lease expires on June 30th. And so they have contacted me to let me know that they've been working over the past several months to empty the building, reallocate some of their stuff to other Boy Scout or scouting organizations, and that they are going to have a dumpster actually in the parking lot. They've coordinated with DPW for the remainder of their things during the month of June. What's not on here that I wanted to share is that they're also going to be looking into auctioning off the building. And so those would be, so we'll work with them on that process. Related to Waste Management, following the last meeting, I met with the Waste Management Exploratory Committee about next steps. The committee appointed Shelby Marshall as their representative to work with me on the development of an RFP. But we'll also be working with the Public Health Director, Jen Sullivan, DPW Director and Finance Director, to work through those next steps. So we're hoping to have an RFP ready in June. We'll bring that back to the Waste Management Exploratory Committee before this Board sees it, for them to review and weigh in on different items. I'd sent the Board an email related to some of our scheduling. So at this point, it looks like everyone is available, July 11th and August 1st, and then August 29th, I think we have four of the five of you are available. We typically have one meeting in July and one meeting in August, but with the five Tuesdays in August, I was recommending two meetings in August. Related to the Senior Needs Assessment, I thought we had a great turnout for the Senior Needs Assessment at the presentation on May 16th that was done by the Center for Aging and Gerontology, UMass, who did our report. That meeting was livestreamed on Westboro TV and it was also recorded. My understanding is that it's continuing to play and is accessible on Westboro TV if folks want to read it. It's everywhere for folks to read it. If you want to watch the presentation, that's also accessible. And so we'll be coming in the month of June with some initial recommendations related to the outcomes. The Westboro Regional poll vote, just as a follow-up from the last meeting, just reminding the Board that this is something that needs to be voted on by the end of June. However, the Board had some questions about some additional information before you vote, so we have reached out to all of the members of Westboro Regional Retirement that would vote, so all the towns. We've gotten a pretty good response, so we'll have that information available to you for your vote in the month of June. And then, related to the Town Planner, as you all know, Jim Robbins retired, though he's still around, thankfully, he's been helping us on an interim basis. However, the Planning Board will be meeting at 5:00 on this Thursday to interview a candidate for the permanent position. The Recreation Department replaced the tennis nets at the Haskell Street Tennis Court. They're exploring options to install windshields at the Nelson Pickleball Courts. The golf course has been busy, with average utilization is at almost 90%. Golf in the Schools program will run at Givens Middle School, June 5th to the 7th. The Town Clerk's Office is happy to announce the hiring of Assistant Town Clerk. So Kevin McLaughlin comes to us from the Marlborough City Clerk's Office, where he served as an Elections Clerk. He was the Assistant Town Clerk in Wayland prior to that. So he looks forward to getting to know all the residents in Westboro, go say hi. In the Finance Department, we've received two grants. The Westboro Cultural Council received a grant of $2,500 for festivals, and then we received that additional $500,000 from MassDOT for the Oda Street project. There are several RFPs that are out, related to the library, public works. There's also contracts that we're completing, the MDM contract for the Oda Street project related to the design, we're getting ready to execute, and then some other agreements. The Assessors' Office continues to work on the fiscal '24 revaluation, as well as annual cyclical impairment inspections. Treasure Collector's Office, the billing software system conversion is underway, and actually, our Finance Director, Leah Talbot, will talk about that, so I'll leave that update to her. At the Senior Center, beginning in May, the Senior Center started having a musical performance on Wednesdays at lunchtime, so these also coordinate with the grab and go lunches, people can stay and eat their lunch, listen to music. It's been successful. On May 18th, they had their annual volunteer recognition breakfast with almost 100 people in attendance. The Senior Center also brought back the Sunshine Memory Cafe, which had been paused due to COVID. They had 27 people in attendance at the last cafe. The Senior Center supporters are finalizing their plans for the Holiday Fair that will be held on Saturday, November 18th. The COA and staff attended the open meeting law training, that actually was open to all Boards and Committees, so we did have a turnout for that. Also, it was recorded by Westboro TV, so we'll be sending that out to folks who were unable to attend that meeting. It was held by our Town Council, and it was open meeting law and public records training. Alma and Stephanie assisted with the Rotary Club on Saturday, May 20th, with their day of service, delivering lunches and preparing the Veterans Garden for Memorial Day. And the Executive Director was appointed a Notary Public by Governor Haley and will be sworn in in June, so they'll now be able to offer that service at the Senior Center. Additionally, the Veterans Agent will be holding monthly office hours at the Senior Center beginning in June. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Next on the agenda, we have Real Estate and Personal Property Billing Conversion with our Finance Director.
Good evening. Leah Talbot, your Finance Director. Can you hear me? This doesn't sound like it's resonating. It's okay? It's all good? All right. So, kind of interesting, I saw Kristi reading, I thought, well, if she's going to read my report, then I guess I don't have to do anything.
(Laughter).
Sorry. Sorry, that's going to happen. So, as you are probably aware from recent Town Meeting article, a couple of years ago, the Finance Department has been upgrading our software, starting with the Assessors' Office. John had updated his Assess Pro to AP5 and is very happy with that. We moved on to the Treasure Collector's Office, and we are upgrading the software in there, the modules for real estate, personal property, then we'll move on to motor vehicle excise, and then we'll move on to utility billing. And somewhere in there, we will probably end up having to throw stormwater management in there, so. But right now, because, I'm here because we were just recently notified by our third-party bill pay company, which is Invoice Cloud, that when they update our services for that new bill in June, they're going to have to create a new portal for that new bill. So basically, what that means is it's going to impact people that use Invoice Cloud. So first, there's a lot more people that aren't going to be impacted, so who's not going to be impacted? So anyone that has their taxes paid by their mortgage company is not going to be impacted, that's a lot of people. Anyone that sends lockbox payments in, or payments through the mail, even to Town Hall, will not be affected. Anyone that walks into the office, or drops off a payment out on the black box, will not be affected. Anyone that pays through their own personal banking account will not be affected. And even folks that do use Invoice Cloud, that pay as a guest, will not be impacted. So who will be impacted and what's the impact? So residents and businesses who have set up accounts on Invoice Cloud and have auto-pay functions set up, which we know is about 400 people, 400 businesses or 400 individuals. So in order for them to continue to have that auto-pay function, they're going to tap, to take an action. If they don't take an action, the auto-pay will not work. So it's important that, that once the bills are issued, that those folks take action. So unfortunately, they can't do anything until the bills are issued, because the portal won't be live until the bills are issued. So therefore, they wouldn't be able to set up an account until the portal is live, kind of chicken and egg thing. So how are we letting people know? First of all, I'm standing here, so your vast viewing audience is seeing this. Also, we're going to be sending out targeted emails, because of the fact that we are able to see who has auto-pay, we have their email addresses. So we're going to send out an email to those 400 people, explain the situation more generalized, because we don't have that link, right? So we're going to tell them about it, but we're not going to be able to fix what their issue is until the portal goes live. So we'll give them an introductory email explaining what's going to happen, and what they're going to receive next. And then, once we get closer to the live date of those bills going out, then we will contact them again and say, okay, here's a link, if you want to continue to use your auto-pay, you're going to have to go set up an account. They've already set up an account, they know how to use it, they're probably more computer-savvy than most people, because they're doing auto-pay, they trust computers. So, so they're going to have to go in, reset up the account, reset up their payment method, and start the process all over again. It's not exorbitant, but they will have to do it in order for the auto-pay to work. What else are we going to do? So besides sending out that email, we're going to put a stuffer in the tax bills, we'll put something on Facebook, we're going to put something on the news feed, there'll be something on the website, so when someone goes in to pay a bill, they'll be directed, okay? If you are in New Bill and you want to go to Invoice Cloud, you're going to go here. So, this will continue to happen, once we go into the motor vehicle as well, but that's probably about six months down the road, and then a year down the road for water and sewer, so. But, just wanted to let you know, thought it would be a good way to get that information out, and to get in front of it, obviously. We didn't want to wait till the last minute, so we wanted to get the information out as quickly as we could. So, that's where we stand. But everything's going fine, it's just, we have two things talking to one another, it just needs to be a different portal, so.
Questions?
Sounds like a great plan. Appreciate the proactive outreach and getting ahead of it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know if, if folks don't respond and they try an auto-pay, will you be notified that they're attempted payment?
So they're not going to be able to, so if they go to the old portal and log in, they won't be able to find their bill. They're only going to be able to find their bill on the new portal.
But if, I guess if they're, if they try an auto-pay, right? If they don't do anything, it's going to, is it going to attempt to pay the bill?
No.
No.
No, because there's no bill there.
Requested.
Right. So there has to be a bill attached to their account, in order for the auto-pay function to work. And because there's no bill, there will be no payment created. So, that's why we want them to know, because if they were, that's why we're sending the email, because we're, I'm thinking to myself, well, if you don't pay your bill, because you have it already auto-paid, you're not going to look at your bill. You're going to be just like, oh yeah, I don't have to worry about that, because it's on auto-pay. That's why we're sending the targeted email, so we can say, hey, your auto-pay isn't going to work like you think it's going to in July, you need to take action.
Got you, you'll just have extra money in your account and wonder why.
Yes, yes. And then they'll come knocking on our door. But I had auto-pay, so.
Yeah, I guess I just had one question. Thank you, Leah. Will you be, can you put the message up on the current portal, letting them know in advance, hey, this is, this is going to move, I'm not sure if you said that? And will a redirect be on that page, that portal page? So if they happen to go there first, they can just click through?
So Invoice Cloud is in charge of their content, as far as that goes, so I'm not, I can't tell you what the invoice cloud portal will look like. I do know that on the Town's website, we have a link that says to pay your bill, click here. And so what we'll do is, we will probably have to pay your water and sewer bill, and your motor vehicle excise tax bill, click here. Or if you're in arrears, an older real estate tax bill. But any new real estate tax bill will have a different link.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, thank you.
Okay, next, we have Local Emergency Planning Committee Composition. Members of our Fire Department.
Good evening. Steven Doucette, Deputy Fire Chief. I also come to you as the Chair of the LEPC, of the Local Emergency Planning Committee. And we're here tonight to bring before you the updated committee composition, term lengths, and bylaw updates, and appointments. So before we, okay. So before we get to that, with your permission, I'd like to just kind of do a brief overview of LEPC. You all may have a pretty good handle on it, but for the benefit of our citizens who may be watching or tuning in, or here at the meeting, I just thought I'd just give a brief overview of what LEPC is about. So, okay. So why LEPC? So the catalyst for formation of local emergency planning committees was two major events in the mid-1980s. One was Bhopal, India, where there was a chemical release from a Union Carbide plant. Thousands of people died, like half a million people were injured by this plume of gas that came out. And then it was a year later, in more local in this country, in West Virginia, there was a release of a chemical agent, same company, different chemical, where 135 people were injured, but fortunately, no deaths. And of course, since then, there's been numerous events, but these two events in history were sort of the catalyst for the formation of LEPCs. So, continuing on to the next slide. Oh, sorry. Yep, next slide. That's it, sorry. So continuing on to the history, so in October of 1986, President Reagan signed into law, SARAH Title III, also known as the Superfund Amendments and Reauthorization Act. It's also known as the EPRA, or the Emergency Planning and Community Rights to Know Act. And what it did was, it's a law that mandates at the state and tribal levels for communities to, to, to appoint, first of all, state agencies, oversee on the local level, the local emergency planning committees. Local level being, could just be a single community, which we are, we have our own LEPC, or it can be a regionalized committee, which Massachusetts has several of them. So the point of it is, as part of EPRA, it was, it was to provide citizens and emergency responders with information concerning potential chemical hazards present in their communities. So it got everybody going on planning for events, and hopefully preventing them. Also, along with that, was, part of the Community Rights to Know Act was, the community has a right to know what chemicals, what hazardous chemicals are in their committee, are in their community, sorry. And, so, I'm kind of jumping ahead here, but businesses that use hazardous chemicals or hazardous materials, if they have certain quantities or certain types of materials, they are required under law to report that to the state, the EPA, and the local committee, which we are. So every year, I get what they call Tier Two reports, from all the businesses that are required to report, and they submit the information to me, the Fire Department being the, they're collecting of the information, so. And then that information is available upon written request to anybody in the community. We have to be careful, we don't infringe on any privacy, or whatever, or the, this case, sorry. Anything secret for the business to run, so. So we'll go to the next one. So, kind of skipping around a little bit, but one of the key goals for, or part of the key objectives for EPRA was the formation of LEPCs. And the LEPC is the primary authority for gaining the information necessary to prepare and protect the community from chemical accidents. And then as LEPC, as time has gone on, the LEPC has, in some cases, evolved into sort of an all-hazards for planning for natural disasters or man-made disasters, not just chemical, chemical disasters. Next slide. So, I thought it would be good to sort of reset and issue a mission statement of the LEPC, or Westboro LEPC, and that is to develop an emergency response plan, to prepare and protect the community and emergency responders from chemical release. Excellent. The goals would be community preparedness, increased public knowledge and access to information on the chemicals in their communities, and any chemical releases that have happened, that occurred within the community. The LEPC is also a focal point for information and discussion about hazardous emergency planning, and health and environmental risks. So what, who makes, who or what makes up the LEPC? So we're, again, mandated by EPRA, mandated by law, we have to include individuals in certain positions throughout the community, and that being town government, public safety, police, fire, EMS, public works, public health, media, local media, and also the transportation, conservation, and also private industry or businesses, such as healthcare, and businesses that, that use or store hazardous materials. So, I'm sorry, that was the next slide. Sorry, I'm not queuing you at the right time. So just to kind of recap, what our mission is or our goals is to develop and review the emergency plan, so that Westboro has a comprehensive emergency plan. Next one. Westboro has a comprehensive emergency management plan that was approved by the Select Board, and also a hazardous materials release plan that goes with that. So what we're required to do is regularly review and update the plan as necessary, regularly test the plan, and we do that by holding either a tabletop drill, we could have a full-scale drill, or we can also satisfy the requirement by reviewing any hazardous materials spilled in the community, or within the community. Again, I talked about, we receive, another requirement is that we receive the emergency release and hazardous chemical inventory information submitted by local facilities, and we make that information available to the public upon request. And I'm also, although this wasn't my doing, this was before I became the Deputy, the LEPC has achieved full certification, which allows us to be eligible for EPA reimbursement for grants for emergency response to hazardous materials released incidents, and some limited funding related to planning, training, and exercising. So, sorry, I was a little bit, I was a little bit ahead of you, but. So, a couple of months ago, I guess we started having a conversation with our Town Manager, Kristi Williams, who, and the Chief, Chief Purcell, myself and Kristi, got together and took a good look at our bylaws, and kind of weighed them against the committee rules handbook, and discovered there were a lot of discrepancies in what our bylaws said, which, in our thinking, was there were more sort of policies and procedures, but there were a lot of inconsistencies with the committee handbook, and also with the laws of the Commonwealth. So, we got together, and we came up with the changes in the bylaws that we're actually bringing forward to you, and also, we updated our committee members and term links with that too, so. And, Kristi, I don't know if you want to jump in here. So, I believe we decided that some of the positions, such as Emergency Management Director, Chairman of the Select Board, certain positions wouldn't necessarily have to be appointed. It was some of the other positions, such as like the people in the private industry, and there's a couple others here, so. I don't know if you want to speak on that.
Sure, yeah, thank you. So if you, I included in your packet the marked-up version of the bylaws, though I'm not sure if any of you have seen the bylaws before, but at least gave you some context of what we were working on. In the new Article III, which is a list of the membership, the first nine positions, with the exception of number five, which is the firefighters, are specific positions within the town, so you wouldn't need to appoint those individuals, they would just be on it by virtue of having that position. One example of that is a Select Board Chair. And then number five is, three firefighters or paramedics designated by the chief, so that would be the chief that would choose those. And then numbers 10 through 14 would be individuals that you would appoint, the way that we had listed it. So within Deputy Doucette's letter, he listed out the individuals that we had hoped that you would appoint. It's a little bit different, we didn't ask them each individually to do a letter of interest, because we're really just trying to kind of get this committee, you know, ready to go, move forward, so. So we're asking you to approve the updated bylaws, the terms that we had, that we listed out in here, which is to do that staggered three-year term, which we've been trying to do with a lot of the committees, and then also to appoint the individuals that are listed on your agenda.
Any questions?
Yeah, I'll just say, first of all, thank you Deputy Chief for the work on this, and Kristi for working on this, I certainly support it. I guess my question is more on your presentation. With, with what happened in Ohio recently, with the train derailments and the chemical disasters that happened there, and the devastation in those communities, I'm just curious, you know, obviously we have a train line that comes through our town, I believe it does bring commercial products on there. Do we know, or do we have any insight into, are there chemicals being transported through our community? And if so, is that part of the oversight of LEPC, to understand that and have that as part of the overall response plan?
The short answer would be, I'd like to say yes, but I, and I'm going to kind of ask the Chief's expertise on this. So, if I'm not mistaken, so as you probably know, we have a transflow, the rail yard down off of Wockup Drive that does
Yep.
Transfer of products. And to this date, I don't believe there are any hazardous materials being, is that? If you want to speak on that. And then I'm not, and then the other question that was kind of deferred to the Chief was, need to look into this more, but when it comes to the railroad, I'm not sure how much information we can get from the railroad.
So to answer your question on that, we don't know everything that's coming up and down the rail line through town, just the same as I don't know everything that's coming up and down the Mass Turnpike off 495. So, we are trained, we are, our entire department is trained to a minimum of a hazmat operational level. We are fortunate on our department to have two technician-level hazmat responders, the Deputy is one of them. That is the highest level of certification in the Commonwealth, and they actually are both appointed to the state team. So when we respond to a hazmat incident, no, I don't know everything that's out there coming through our town, but we're prepared for staging before it, identifying what it is. We have hazmat manuals that we carry, we carry proper metering equipment, and also decon equipment and proper PPE. So we don't really, depending on what the hazmat incident is, we don't always, those are calls that go slow, like if it's a fire, we go fast, we go slow, protect the public, protect ourselves, call the state hazmat team, we do as much at the operations level as we can, try to protect the environment. But the short answer is, we have no idea what's going up and down the rail line. We do know that CSX has four facilities that they offload material at in Massachusetts, three of them are not in Westboro. three of them are not in Westboro, and three of them do not offload hazmat at it, and one is here that they offload the majority of their hazmat at. And that's the transflow facility that goes from rail to truck. So, they have very specific site plan requirements that require them to use connector drive, Flanders Road, Connector Road, 49509 something, and get out of town, they're not allowed to go through town. So, we do have parameters set up for that, but that's really.
Thank you for those details. Having known nothing about this program, and having seen what happened in Ohio, I'm really glad to see that the town has this, and that this work has been done. So, again, thank you very much, and I appreciate those answers.
You're welcome. Other questions, or somebody want to make a motion?
I would.
I'll move to approve the updated bylaws and composition of the local emergency planning committee, and further move to appoint school department employees responsible facilities. Kelly Giacopello for a one-year term, school department employee responsible transportation, Cynthia Crowley for a two-year term, community group member Jaslyn Carr for a three-year term, and environmental health and safety facility representative Michael DiLarso a one-year term, Scott Berkowitz a two-year term, and Daniel McNally a three-year term, and hospital personnel Rebecca Roman a one-year term, Lynn Keely a two-year term, and Donald Monte a three-year term.
Second. All right, any questions? All those in favor?
Can I, can I just ask a question? Are the individuals, so I'm familiar with a couple of them, are the individuals that, let me just get to the right list. So, excluding the school department individuals, the community group member, environmental health and safety, and hospital personnel, are those individuals Westboro residents? I know some of them work in Westboro, but they're not necessarily residents, right?
No. I'm not entirely sure.
No, I'm hearing no. But they work here, or they do work here? Okay, thank you. Okay, that's all. Thank you, sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yep, that's quite all right. All those in favor? Five zero. Deputy Chief, thank you very much. Thank you very much. See, I'll do better on my cubes next time, sorry. I was running ahead of my. It being 6:36, we will open the public hearing, a request for a new Section 12 All Alcohol Liquor License for Cold Harbor Brewing Company at 66 Otis Street. Can I get a motion?
So, move.
Second. Roll call vote?
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Kio, yes. The hearing is now open. Chris, yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the select board. My name is Matt Ekel, and I'm an attorney with Fletcher Tilton, located at 370 Main Street in Worcester. I'm here on behalf of Cold Harbor Brewing Company, LLC. Also in attendance tonight is Will Olivera, the owner of Cold Harbor, as well as Nicholas Long, who's the proposed manager of record of the new facility. As mentioned, we are seeking a new Section 12 Restaurant All Alcoholic Beverages License. For a brief background, Cold Harbor's been operating for almost a decade here in Westboro over at 108 Milk Street. As they've grown, they had an opportunity to acquire some land and develop a new facility, which would be not only a restaurant, but a new facility to continue to produce their beverages. So, it would all be located in one large building at 66 Otis Street. The restaurant and patio would be facing the front of the building, and then the brew facility, which would be completely located at the rear of the facility, will not be accessible by the general public, that'll just be for actual brewing and production of the beverages. We are seeking, as I mentioned, a Section 12 All Alcoholic Beverages License. This will allow Cold Harbor to serve their own produced beverages, as well as outside beverages at the restaurant itself. The restaurant's being designed as a casual American dining experience. We're still finalizing hours, but we would be seeking a closing hour of 11:00 PM, seven days a week. We would likely close a little bit earlier throughout the week, but would seek that consistent closing hour if it pleases the select board. The premises itself, as I mentioned, at the front of the building is the entrance to the restaurant. There'll also be a function room, which can open and close, so it can host private functions or be part of the general restaurant. There's obviously a kitchen facility, as well as a small retail space to sell merchandise, as well as products that are produced on-site. There's also a large patio, which will provide an outdoor seasonal dining experience when appropriate. Just introduce, Nick, if you want to come up, proposed manager of record, as I mentioned, is Nicholas Long. He is familiar with the rules and regulations for the storage and serving of alcoholic beverages. He is a Massachusetts resident and a US citizen. He does have experience in the industry, he previously worked at the Cold Harbor Tap Room as the manager, as well as Pepper's Artful Events, so he's familiar with serving both food and alcohol. So, with that, the whole team is happy to take any questions the board may have, but that's our general presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Just excited.
Very excited.
Very excited, congratulations for all the work that is being done. It's going to be a great addition to Westboro, so very, very excited.
Thank you very much.
Sean, I just, sorry, usually I think it's, we have like the, whatever, the TIP certification and all that, I didn't see it in there, but assuming that.
So, that was submitted as part of the package, we can supplement if it's not in there. These tips, serve safe and TIP certified.
I don't know if I missed it in there, if it wasn't, but that's perfect, thank you. And I'm very excited about this happening, I know a lot of people in town talking, it's a lot of buzz going on, so best of luck.
Thank you.
Would I make a motion?
I guess, do we need to see if there are any comments?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
This being a public hearing, seeing none, please.
Sure. I move to issue a Section 12 All Alcohol Restaurant License to Cold Harbor Brewing Company, LLC, DBA Cold Harbor Brewing Company, at 66 Otis Street, contingent upon receiving a certificate of inspection and turning in their farmer brewer pouring license.
Seconded. All those in favor? Do we do roll call it? Just in case.
Johnson, yes. Edinburgh, yes.
Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Kio, yes. Five to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Sean, can I just, sorry, one thing, and I know you've been in operation, Will, you've been in operation, but it's something I always say, that with the liquor laws, we take it very seriously here, we, enjoy, I swear the right word, but we like to support the businesses. As folks know, we petitioned to get more of these liquor licenses, because we know it's an amenity in the community that folks like, but we do take it very seriously, so we're happy to grant this license, we're not happy if you come back in because of a violation, so you know that from your training, you've run a very successful business for 10 years, as you said, and folks know that, just a reminder that we do take it seriously, and just want folks to be safe, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Best of luck.
Congrats.
I move to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Kio, yes. All right, the hearing is closed. Next on our agenda is American Rescue Plan Act Fund allocation update from the Recreation Department.
Welcome back.
I think while Jen's getting ready, it was both the request from Recreation for reallocation, but also just an update on the allocations that have been awarded so far. So, we have, I'm just seeing to open it. So, as the board's aware, last year you awarded several projects, the town received about $5.7 million in ARPA funds, and we allocated the majority of those funds. So, we have about $400,000 that have not been allocated or awarded by this board. Just as a reminder, our process has been that department heads or committee chairs make a, fill out a form that we've created, they watch, they view a video to make sure that they understand the reporting requirements, a video that was done by the federal government, and then the finance team, which is made up of finance folks from both the town and school, review those, make a recommendation to AFC, goes to AFC, they hear the requests, and then comes to this board for awards. So, the first time that you did that, it was a joint meeting, and then you've made some changes since then, and some reallocations since then. So, just as an update in your packet, you have this spreadsheet, the spreadsheet was actually created as part of our required reporting, it's just a smaller spreadsheet than what we had to give to the government, but just for the public, we have the Assessor Field inspections, which are ongoing, so we do have a contract for that, expect to expend the full $25,000. Community development, we have the Direct Assistance to Businesses Working Capital Grant, which is $65,000. Our economic development director was just, has just started to work on that with the Economic Development Committee, so we do expect to expend all of that. The fire department has the radio project, so we awarded $186,000. At this point, they have a contract to expend 140, so looking at additional needs for that other $45,000. The police department had the three additional police officers, you awarded just under $600,000. We didn't hire all of the officers when, at the date that we had projected, so some of that money has fallen back to that bottom line, that $400,000 that I mentioned. DPW is working on the chlorine potassium hydroxide project for just under a million, that is being permitted through the DEP, and will go out to bid this summer. I'll skip over the splash pad, Jen's going to talk to you about that. The high school chillers, that has gone out to bid, and they have a purchase order out for $99,000. There were some, I think the total bids came in higher than they had thought, but they were able to bid the project out so that they could do portions of it, so that's what we're seeing with that $99,000 at this point, and then they'll be working forward on that project. There are two projects that were awarded to Youth and Family Services, neither one of them have moved forward, because with the resignation of our director at the time, but still holding that money for that purpose. The Armstrong Roof Repair, that's fully complete, so we spent just under $1.3 million on that. Our very first project that was awarded was consulting for help with this reporting, and so we have that contract outstanding. And then we have the Mass Works matching funds, the $250,000, which we know we'll be expending, because we were awarded that Mass Works grant, as well as some other funding from other state, Mast dot, and some other grants. So, at the bottom of your page here, you see that the uncommitted balance was about $221,000. The 400 that I mentioned is inclusive of the reallocation, if it's awarded today, and we have sent out a request to departments for some additional ideas that can come through that similar process, so.
So, Kristi, can you just clarify what you just said? So, we're seeing $221,000 and change as uncommitted, and then you just, the 400?
Yep, so currently you've awarded $275,000 for the recreational splash pad. I don't want to steal your thunder, but Jen's request is going to be to reallocate $107,000 of that, which would leave the other 160-something to fall to the bottom line.
That brings us to 400, I understand, thank you.
Great, thanks for having me. My name's Jen Kirkland, I'm the town's recreation director, I'm here to talk to you about dog park, and a little bit about the splash pad, and why we decided to pull back on that project, and asked for this reallocation. So, I'm here before you tonight to talk about our dog park. The goal is to build a community dog park that would be open to all residents. We envision a park that would be, that would build relationships amongst community members and their dogs. The park would be primarily funded through the Stanton Foundation. This town was just recently awarded $25,000 for the design portion of the grant, so that's really exciting. So, the Recreation Department, we're seeking $107,915.23 of already awarded ARPA funds to support this project. We worked with a design firm to come up with a budget for this dog park, and it's estimated that our portion of the cost will total at $107,915. That will include 10% of the hard construction costs, which is a contingency of the Stanton Grant, plus all applicable soft costs. So, benefits of a dog park, in 2022, there were just over 2,000 registered dogs in Westboro. Having a dog park or dedicated space where dogs can play off-leash will decrease the number of off-leash dogs on other public spaces. This is important, we get calls all the time of unleashed dogs on our trails, our playing fields, and most recently in the past year, we've had people use the West Street tennis courts as a dog park. Please don't do that, but it, just having a dedicated space for dogs will allow people to exercise their dogs off-leash in a safe and contained way. Pedestrian safety, people that don't have sidewalks in our neighborhoods will be able to come to this park and exercise their dog, and the same thing for people living in apartment buildings or homes with limited yard space, it would just give people a contained, safe environment for their, for their dogs. Maintenance, the dog park would become another facility under our department. We already manage over 30 facilities, we don't do it alone, the DPW is a great support in that, but we're well versed in what it takes to maintain outdoor facilities. We'll work with the town animal control officer to develop park policies and procedures. Wouldn't try to reinvent the wheel, there are plenty of dog parks in the state already that have already done this work, but we would work with her to make sure that our policies fit the town of Westboro. There are minimal upkeep costs, other towns, you know, report less than $1,000 annually. You know, when there's vested interest in a facility like this, people that use the facility ensure that it is maintained and taken care of, some local examples of the Hennessy Fields Cricket Pitch and the Nelson Ball Pickleball Courts. Organic groups of people have kind of just naturally banded together, and they report to us if there's something going on down there that we need to take a look at, or if we're out of something, if they're, you know, the porta-potties aren't there when they're supposed to be, you know, and people want to see the spaces taken care of, so I expect that the same would happen with a dog park. So, the location benefits, this is a nice aerial view that Westboro TV did for us, dog walkers over at the state hospital property already are there, using the trails. The site has water, access to water and electricity if we were ever to need it, that space right now would not ever be, it wouldn't be used for any other kind of playing field or anything, so it's not like it's taking away from something else that that space could be used for, and it's far enough away from the other amenities there, so all of the soccer fields are sort of back, are back here, that's the new cricket pitch, so it wouldn't be in the way. So, this is Lyman Street here, you pull in, and the dog park would be right here. This is a schematic drawing that our Westboro Engineering Department did, so it's a very simple drawing that we had to submit along with our grant. Once we start moving forward, our next step would be to retain an architect and a designer, where we would go out and do a full design. So, things like shade, additional seating could be addressed during that process. I was at a meeting today, the town of Southsboro actually was also awarded a Stanton grant, and they are going to have a couple of public meetings when they go out, when they design their park. So, I think that we would probably explore doing the same. So, these are just some, I pulled just from the town's strategic plan, master plan, open space and rec plan, and our, the recreation master plan that was done, just to kind of call your attention, that the dog park has been talked about, you know, maybe not as much as, you know, you say a community center or other things like that, but it's been out there, people, it's something that people want in this town. So, from the strategic plan, that was done in 2016, thoughtfully planned, built, natural environment, so basically to just try to help the community strike a balance between, you know, having facilities that maintain a mental and physical and economic well-being in the community, so enhance the Lake Chauncey Recreation Area, create a dog park that was specifically called out. From the open space and rec plan that was done in 2018, develop the master plan or conceptual drawing that our department did in 2016, which does call out a dog park, and then from the most recent master plan, one of the goals is to provide public recreational facilities indoor and outdoor, and one of the action items in that plan is to construct a dog park. And so, on this next slide, this is the master plan or conceptual drawing that we, our department had done back in 2016, this is just a conceptual drawing, none of this is set in stone, we did build those, the two parking lots here, right here and right here, after we learned a little bit about cricket, and how the sport is played, and how the users use it, having a cricket pitch coexists with other fields is not a good idea. Having this dog park up here, also not a great idea, having it more down, like I said at the beginning, back at the beginning of the, you know, towards the entrance of the facility, away from all of the other playing fields, seems more, seems like a better idea to us. And I know, you know, we have a lot of space, the Recreation Department does, we have other playing fields, but they're all used, like all of the space is used, we wouldn't have, this is really the only space that we have that could accommodate a dog park. I know sometimes people will talk about veterans, but veterans is only zoned for passive recreation, so we couldn't build one up there if we wanted to. This is just another drone view from Westboro TV that they did, those are all of our soccer fields, so they go all the way down here, and the cricket pitch, that's our multipurpose field, and this would be the dog park. So, this is just the projected timeline, so we were awarded the Stanton Foundation Design Grant in April, this summer, you know, June and summer, we would go out, put RFPs out for an architect, and then retain that architect to do the design work and get a construction bid ready. and then retain that architect to do the design work and get a construction bid ready for the Stanton Foundation to review. Once the Stanton Foundation reviews that, we would put RFPs out in the early fall for the construction of the dog park. And then in the late fall, bids are open. We sign a contract with Stanton. And then, you know, early 2024, dog park construction could begin and September 2024 is the projected opening of when the park could open. So just to talk a little bit about the previously allocated ARPA funds, we were awarded $275,000 in ARPA funds to build the splash pad at Bay State Common. As we worked through this project, we learned a lot. The project was going to cost significantly more than we had anticipated, partially due to the fact that we want a system that recirculates water, not just a flow-through system. That drives the cost way up. Then there were some questions about the location of the project. Having it be at Bay State, would there be enough parking? Is that the right space for it? And there was also some zoning issues that we weren't aware of at the time at Bay State as well. So in early 2023, we decided to pull back on this project. So we're seeking to reallocate 107,915.23 of that already awarded money to use on this dog park project. And I have Earl with me here too, to answer any type of facility questions. That's all I have.
Questions?
Yeah. Great presentation, thank you so much, Jen. Very excited about this project. Just a quick question on the overview, the flyover there. So the area that's sort of been scraped back right now, is that generally the size of what we can anticipate? I.
It's going to be bigger.
It, okay, yeah, because it, at 14th.
Two areas, large and small.
Got it, okay.
But that'll all go with the design.
Okay, large and small dogs, large and small owners, no, just kidding.
Don't look at me over here. Don't look at me.
Separate yourself by your dog size, okay. All right, so it is, it is anticipated to be larger than what's scraped back, okay. And not that I would expect you to have this answer, but so I'll just put it out there for thoughts. I know some dog parks have, you know, rules in terms of whether you have to be a Westboro resident or there's a, at least a process. Certainly Tufts Field is an example where there's no fee, but you have to kind of register your dog and make sure they, you know. So we might think about that as part of our process once we get down the road as part of that implementation. Not asking you to comment there.
Okay, I sort of have an answer.
Oh, okay, you do, yeah.
We wouldn't, actually, it just, it would be more like our playgrounds. It truly, it just would be open for anyone. I don't think through Stanton, I don't think you can limit it to just Westboro residents.
Okay.
And again, I was at this meeting earlier and Southsboro and Northsboro were awarded one and we all kind of confirmed that that's how everyone was doing things.
Okay, thank you.
But there are opening ones too, so hopefully everyone will just kind of go to their own town anyway.
Yeah, no, 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 but it's helpful, it's helpful to know, particularly if there are grant parameters around that, so thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it, sure, great.
Thanks. So yeah, thank you, Jen, for pulling this together. I appreciate all the information. Couple of questions for you. I'm just curious, what is the town's liability in regards to a dog park? Is there any issues with liability in regards if there's any injuries incurred or any of that?
Same as the playground, as long as we don't charge, we're covered by the open recreation statute, so.
Okay, okay, great. Kind of having moved the location from the conceptual drawing down to this area and now that we're drawing potentially more people into this area, on the conceptual diagram, there was a number of additional, you addressed the two parking areas that have been built so far, but there's, were some other larger parking areas in this particular area that this is now being placed. I'm just curious, if parking isn't being added with parking lots, is there going to be signage to indicate where people can park? And, you know, the sides of the road, et cetera, because that road that's right next to the dog park there is quite small. It's really, really only meant for one lane of traffic.
Yeah, so if you can see here, again, this is just a conceptual drawing. This gravel area right here would be intended for parking. We're not going to pave it, but it will be a gravel area for parking. And, you know, we will be putting up signs to just direct the flow of traffic. There are already some like one-way signs going there anyway, but I would expect that we would have some additional signage once this is built.
Okay. And then what about hours of operation? Is that going to be, is that, has that been considered?
So no, again, I feel like a broken record, but it's just like, it should just be like our playgrounds. They're just, they're open and we would put, you know, dawn to dusk, but they're open.
Will there be any included, you mentioned that one of the goal, one of the hopes here is that we would limit some of the additional off-leash and other animals. I'm sure you're aware of all the problems we have around Chauncey. Lot of animals around Chauncey. Unfortunately, there's a lot of situations with dog feces all around Chauncey. There's been reports to me where people literally can't walk down the path because there's so much. And I'm just curious, is there going to be any signage that says, you know, reminds people of that? Because we're drawing more dogs into the area and I'm just thinking that as they come in, there's nothing that prevents them from being out-of-towners. They come in and they say, hey, this is a beautiful park, but also, hey, look at this, look, Great Lake. Let's, let's start walking around this. I'm just curious, has there been any consideration for?
Yeah, well, as we get further through the process, we'll work with animal control on signage. There'll be bags provided, you know, and there'll be expectations posted of what we expect behavior to be at the park. In regards to cleaning up after animals, after your pets and things like that.
Okay, and then a final question, can you go back to your conceptual drawing for a moment?
Yep.
The other, the picture? Yeah, this guy, so, well, actually, no, not this one. The picture of the cricket pitch, sorry.
Oh, yeah, oh, the drone one.
Yeah, the drone one. Yeah, so this, there's nothing to do with the cricket, with the dog park. I'm just curious, the cricket pitch there, is that stand of trees being removed around the cricket pitch? Just thinking, I watched a cricket game down at, off of Upton Road there the other day and they hit the ball pretty far, I'm just curious.
No, so we met with two of our most avid cricket players when we were kind of coming up with this plan and they assured us that this was going to be enough space, they're going to hit the ball this way. In this picture, it was just actually out there today, so that's why it's top of mind. But there's more space than it looks because that was a concern of ours as well, that it is a 360-degree game almost, but I think most of it will be played like out this way, over here, and there's enough space for them, so.
Okay.
Yep, we're not removing any of those trees.
Thank you very much. And then I'll just make a final comment. I, I support this, it was, this was a, as a lifelong dog owner, I certainly appreciate the need for this and I do support it. However, I just would ask, as the board considers this $100,000 and as we reallocate or pull that money back from the, from the splash pad, as we've seen from the senior study, there's a number of issues facing the town in regards to our senior population. And I think we really need to focus some of that money, that additional ARPA money, towards senior needs based on that senior needs assessment. Perhaps around things such as, such as a handyman or additional hours for handyman and home aides or even better transportation for, for our senior community. The ARPA funds are significantly less than what we started off with and very, actually, I don't think anything on the list in the spreadsheet was specific to our senior community. So I would just point that out to the rest of the board. Thank you, Jen.
Questions on this side?
No, just excited. My wife is probably more excited, as you guys know, but about her bark park, so. But this is great, I think it's, I've looked at, I think it's a great area and thanks for bringing it forward. Nice to, it's been talked about for a long time.
Yep.
Motion?
I'm sorry, can I just have one more comment? So not specific to this project, but I do think at some point, and I'm not sure where this sort of jurisdiction falls, but we should have a conversation about traffic flow in that area. So while there are some signs.
Sure, no.
And it says, do not enter going, I guess, I don't know what direction that is, going along the, like this way. Yeah, it's, it's, it can be a little bit of a free-for-all. So certainly not, again, not asking you to comment here, but I do think as we start to use that area more, we need to have improved signage. And Patrick, I think you made some great points around kind of dogs and in the lake and understanding that we don't own some of that property, you know, around the lake. So it does, I think it's mass wildlife that has jurisdiction. But for future conversation, I'd love for, again, I don't know if that's collaborative with the rec department or it's us, but let's have it, okay?
I move to approve the request of the recreation department to reallocate 107,916 in ARPA funds previously awarded for a splash pad to instead be used to support the construction of an enclosed dog park and to rescind authorization of the remaining 167,084 splash pad award. And then second to move to authorize the construction of a dog park on the portion of the town-owned property identified as Zero Lyman Street, parcel ID 38-1FB-0.
Second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Now say hi to Jazz, my dog who's watching this at home.
Wagging his tail.
No.
No, it's.
No.
You don't have to, it's not like a public hearing that you have to move.
Okay. We have a Class 1 dealer's license application for Albrecht Auto Group.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for seeing us this evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm George Albrecht Jr. I'm president and CEO of Albrecht Auto Group. As you probably guessed, it's family-owned, I'm second generation. My father started it in 1977. We have six franchised and one independent pre-owned dealership, mainly in Massachusetts. Two are in New Hampshire. Our stores are highly awarded in their respective franchises for the top performers. And our business is primarily based on a people-first philosophy and whether that is in regards to our customer or our employees or the general public or the communities we operate in. That's who we are and what we're about. We believe in giving back to the communities that we operate in. We're very excited for this opportunity. We have, our two closest stores would be in Milford and Marlborough. And Norwood, I guess, would be the next closest one. Our headquarters are in our Toyota store in O'Brien.
The questions?
I mean, I think for the public, we should just sort of give an overview, someone should have what, what is going on.
Gotcha, gotcha. So you're taking over the two franchises currently on Turnpike Road, right, that are?
Those two buildings, yes.
Yeah, the G franchises and it's 82 and 84 Turnpike Road.
Correct.
That, that's, for those in town, they're at the end of Long Middle Road where Long Middle Road connects to Route 9. And then you're also taking over a couple of auxiliary lots?
Correct.
From the same?
They use two storage lots.
Okay. One being on, I believe it's.
Old Flanders.
On Old Flanders?
Yes.
Off of Fruit Street.
And the other being on Brigham Street.
Correct.
And the two locations on Route 9, are they both going to be Dodge dealerships? They're both actually the same?
So it's Chrysler, what was Chrysler became Chrysler Fiat and now they've rebranded themselves as Stellantis. The brands that are actually represented at those two stores are Chrysler, Dodge, Jeep and Ram.
And that will remain the same?
Nothing, yeah, we're not changing that.
So no significant change in operations?
No, we are, our intent is to keep as many of the employees that want to stay on with us. And we're not even proposing, the buildings are conforming to the factory's environmental design initiatives, so we don't need to do anything with that. And the signage, we're not changing that either. So it's, it's all already conforming with the factory.
Apparently turnkey, I guess they would call it.
Fairly, yeah.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Nice long one.
Yeah.
I'll take the long one.
You can take it out.
I move to issue a 2023 Class 1 Dealer's License for GTA Acquisition LLC, DBA Albrecht CDJR of Westboro at 82 Turnpike Road and 84 Turnpike Road, consisting of showrooms, repair shop and office space with the following conditions and restrictions. 82 Turnpike Road parking plan is designated and approved by the select board with a vehicle capacity of 74 unregistered vehicles, 33 customer vehicles and 16 employee vehicles. 84 Turnpike Road parking plan is designated and approved by the select board with a total capacity of 181 unregistered vehicles, 11 customer and 13 employee spaces. 13A Brigham Street parking plan is designed and approved by the select board for auxiliary parking storage of a maximum of 69 unregistered vehicles. For Old Flanders Road, parking plan is designated and approved by the select board for auxiliary parking and storage of a maximum of 123 unregistered vehicles. Additionally, the business must comply with the following comments received May 2023 from the following county departments. Police Department, no parking vehicles associated with the business on Long Middle Road. Fire Department, connections used to support the sprinkler systems are not to be obstructed by parked vehicles and access to the building is not obstructed at the entryways during off-hours. Conservation Department, the property at 82 and 84 Turnpike Road is subject to compliance with the Massachusetts Stormwater Standards and Wetland Protections Act. Therefore, stormwater infrastructure must be maintained and may be able to provide documentation related to onsite maintenance program.
Second. Questions? All those in favor? Five to zero.
Thank you very much. Welcome to Westboro. Yeah, well, welcome to Westboro.
I'm excited.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Are we early?
So we got five minutes.
We could do the town planner.
Okay.
Let's see here. We have a request to amend the job description and classification plan for the, for a town planner title change.
And it's as simple as that. We're asking you to approve amending the title. This is something that came up during the, we currently have an active search for a town planner candidate and during the course of speaking with other planners, other communities, we got some feedback that a more modern title, if you will, Director of Planning was suggested. And this was something that the search committee raised when the search committee last met. The planning board took it up this week. They are in favor of amending the title. So while the planning board is the appointing authority, the select board actually has the authority to act on changing the title and the job description. So we're asking that you approve that change. So it would go from Town Planner to Director of Planning.
Take a motion?
Yes, thank you.
I move to amend the town planner job description as proposed and to update the classification plan.
Second. Questions? All those in favor? Five to zero, by being present.
Too fast.
Can you do the transfer?
Yeah, you can do the transfer.
Okay.
So we are seeking an inter-departmental transfer of $16,000 from Youth and Family Services Salary and Wages, which we have available as we're continuing to look for folks to fill two positions in Youth and Family, to central purchasing. Central purchasing is our budget that funds all of our postage, paper, toner, all sorts of needs throughout the town. We've seen an increase in postage this year, also in paper, toner, everything's more expensive. We also noted that there was more mailings coming from the town clerk's office for the November election. So we're just seeing an increase. So we'll continue to monitor that budget in fiscal '24 to see if we need to make any adjustments.
I move to approve the interdepartmental transfer to move $16,000 from Youth and Family Services Salary and Wages to central purchasing as presented.
Second. All those in favor? Five to zero.
Minutes?
Minutes? Do I have a motion on minutes?
I'll move to approve the May 9, 2023 minutes.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Let's see. We still have, we probably need a few more minutes than that for a community preservation.
I don't know that we do.
It's up to you.
We can start it and, I don't know, it's up to you.
I mean, we probably need five minutes.
Okay, let's go ahead.
Okay. Celia, can you pull that up?
Uh, yeah, I just.
I know the board has its presentation in front of them, but for the public? I know the board has its presentation in front of them, but for the public? Maybe not, I'm eating into my time. Okay, so as she's doing it, so as the board is aware, at our last meeting, we were preparing to approve the posting for the Community Preservation Committee. And we agreed that just because it's been a while since our last town meeting, and since all of this activity, creating the act took place, that we use this time just to inform the public of, just really kind of bring them back up to speed, and hopefully to generate some enthusiasm and interest in this committee. So the Community Preservation Act is, has been passed here in Westboro. CPA funds will begin to be collected in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. It's a half a percent surcharge rate. There is a, an approved exemption, part of the bylaw, for the first one hundred thousand dollars of valuation on all property classes. And there's a total exemption for low-income property owners of any age and low and income moderate senior, sixty-plus property owners. So that is all part of what was passed, is part of multiple town meetings and a ballot vote. Just as a process refresher, since sometimes our memories are short, it has been a process. We had an annual town meeting in twenty-twenty-two, the town voted to establish the Community Preservation Act. That vote of support brought it to a ballot vote on, in November twenty-twenty-two. It was passed by a majority, a simple majority vote of the, of the voters. And then the town meeting, the next part of that process was town meeting needed to vote to establish the bylaws to basically incorporate it into our bylaws. That being the, the act itself and the Community Preservation Committee elements. So we are sort of at the yellow box here, which is number four, which is to establish the Community Preservation Committee. And as this board knows, we have some appointments to make, and then others are designated by the respective boards and committees that are mandated by the law to be part of this committee. And so the hope is here that by the end of June, we'll have lots of interest, this board will make its appointments, and then the Community Preservation Committee can begin its work in September twenty-twenty-three. Next slide, please. So the committee's responsibilities, for those that are wondering how to get involved and what you would be doing, so this is certainly not all-inclusive, but the committee would be responsible for creating a plan. The plan would meet in public, consult with other municipal boards and committees, hold at least one public meeting for input. And for those of us that remember, as the Affordable Housing Trust started to get up to speed, this reminds me of a lot of the work that they were doing in seeking its input and building its plan, which they've done a great job of. So annually, that plan has to be updated, it has to publicly be posted and submitted to the Department of Revenue. And of course, the committee will define proposal guidelines, acceptance timelines, et cetera. And then they will actually review the projects that are submitted and make recommendations to town meeting, and of course, no projects are, just because the committee recommends them, no projects are approved until town meeting actually approves everyone, line by line, before those funds can be encumbered. Next slide, please. And so, of course, the committee in its charge has record-keeping and budgetary responsibilities. The town's finance department will generously support them. And they'll have to maintain all the necessary agendas, minutes, proposals that they receive, follow open meeting laws, of course, so this is, you know, again, like the Affordable Housing Trust, very public process meetings, et cetera. And then annually, the committee will submit a CPA budget to town meeting. Next slide. So just as a reminder for the board and the public, there is, we are at the stage of the appointment process, so on the left-hand side, you see that one member will be appointed from each of the following by majority vote of that body. All of those boards and commissions listed in that box are by statute, so we didn't change anything there, although we did add Affordable Housing Trust as an additional body there. These members will serve a one-year term and can serve no more than five consecutive terms. And then the at-large members will be appointed by this board, and they'll be in staggered three-year terms to get us started, and so on and so forth. And we'll make those appointments at our June twenty-seven twenty-twenty-three meeting, when the flood of applicants comes in. Next slide?
Uh, that's the last.
Oh, that is the last slide. There we go, see, it was just on a roll. Welcome. Any questions from the board?
No, this is great.
Okay.
It's a great update.
Thank you for the refresher show.
Yep.
I can empathize with the amount of work starting up.
Yeah, it's a lot, and it's, hopefully, we get a lot of interest. Really intended to be kind of a grassroots committee with soliciting ideas across broadly from the committee, so looking forward to folks who have interest. If you do have interest, you have questions, please contact our town manager's office for any questions, I'm certainly available as well, but they're the best resource and most available, so, thank you.
Thanks, Shelby, and a reminder, those letters of interest are due by June ninth. All right, with that, we will go to the public hearing, request for a new pool billiard table license for Four Golf Entertainment at one fifty-three Turnpike Road.
I'll move the, the opening of a public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Kio, yes. The public hearing is open. Please introduce yourself.
How's it going? Jason Thomas, I'm one of the three new owners of Four Golf Entertainment. So the request for two billiards tables in the, in the location in, in Westboro is mainly to try and replicate the offering that we provide our customers in, in Ashland. So we have a, there's an indoor golf center, Dr. Green's Indoor Golf in Ashland, that has pool tables, it has shuffleboard, it has darts, things that kind of round out the offering to the non-golfer, to, as you might be aware, it's a seasonal business, so we slow down around these, this time, so anything we can do to give people, and even just the non-golfers, for events and bringing in different types of clientele into the business to help us through some of the summer months. So that's the, that's the request, it's for two billiards tables, no additional work in the store, we're not changing configuration or layout, it's literally putting, moving some tables in the one section of our store, putting the, the pool tables there.
Yeah, I, I think this was a, a learning opportunity for a lot of us, it seems very last century.
Oh, that we have to approve a license for billiard tables? Well...
I was contemplating wearing the Music Man, uh, Music Man outfit this evening, but didn't want to, didn't want to be too forward.
Yep. Any questions?
No, I would just say, I, I applaud you guys for your creativity, been to the business, it's a great model, and so I think anything you can do to supplement that, and, you know, it sounds, folks are always looking for kind of additional kind of entertainment, and, and so I wish you luck with it, great.
Thank you, great. This being a public hearing, we will take a request from the public to speak?
Yes.
Any, any comments? Yes, please come up.
Come on forward.
Yes, that'd be great, if you could provide us your name.
Barbara McKenzie, a butter, Westbury Animal Hospital owner. I, my, I'm certainly not opposed to billiards of any kind or anything else going in there. Is there a liquor license on the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
My main concern is traffic cutting through, either to get to the billiards part of the business, or leaving the billiards part, because we find that we do now get cut through traffic from the facility at night. I've checked with the people in the hospital and the people that are working there, and they say they do notice the traffic. I'm really concerned about at night when it's dark. And is there some reason that there is not an exit in the back of the property? It's a huge property, and it doesn't have an exit.
Yeah. I don't, don't know what to tell you. That would be up to the, to the landlords, right?
Is that Mr. Rose? Still, okay. Well, that would be my only concern. That would take care of them cutting through to go back like to Northborough or that area. And it's slim enough in there as it is, that that's my only concern, really.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just need a spelling of Barbara's last name.
McKenzie.
Could you spell it for me, please?
M A C, capital K, E N Z I E.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
McKenzie, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes?
Hi.
Please come forward.
My name is Susan Data, and I live at eleven Oak Street, directly behind the property at one fifty-three Turnpike Road. This afternoon, my husband and I dropped off a memo for you guys to, to this young lady here, and, well, I'm sure you guys all read it, but I do have questions for this gentleman, or we were late, I apologize, but my questions were the hours of operation, and what age group the clientele or customers he was going to have, and, and the liquor license issue, I guess, was explained to me, but this gentleman does not have a liquor license, but Tanca has the license. That's what we understand. If, if, those are my questions.
Okay. All right, thank you, for Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, so we won't, we won't be amending our hours of operation for the, for the billiards tables, though, when we're open, the billiards tables will, will be up for use. So during the summertime, that's noon till ten PM during the weekdays, and then ten AM till nine PM on the weekends. And then during the wintertime, we, we have further expanded hours where we're open at ten AM till ten PM, Monday through Thursday, ten AM till eleven PM on Fridays, and then eight AM till nine or ten PM on the weekends.
Um, do you mind if I talk?
Sure.
Well, if you could just...
Are you taking over?
I'll repeat the question.
Yes.
You are taking that over?
Yes.
And that's going to remain?
Yes.
And you're just going to add billiard tables?
Correct. Yep.
And what age group is your clientele?
It's, we've got parents that bring in their kids.
Okay.
We've got seniors up to, we had an eighty-two-year-old in there a couple of weeks ago when I was there. It's, it's an all-ages facility.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had a concern about that, but you are open quite late.
And we're not expanding the, we're, we're replicating the hours that the previous business had as well. So we're coming in as new business owners, but we're still operating it as the same indoor golf center it was previously.
Well, we're, we, we live behind the property there, and there's been a lot of deterioration in our barrier that was supposed to be kept up. So we have a concern about added business going in there, especially if you're going to be open until ten o'clock at night. It's not like someone going to buy golf clubs at ten o'clock at night. There's, there's going to be people playing a game, and that's great, I might even be interested, but my problem is, my understanding is that there's a bar at Tanca, and then there's one on the second floor, and I'm sure adults would probably utilize that.
Yep.
And I, I just don't want any more problems with noise and lights and yelling, that's my only concern.
Sure.
So we're hoping that a barrier will be reinstalled with a fence and with trees like it was supposed to be, and never have gotten kept updated. But it sounds like a fun place, and I hope you do allow, you just keep an eye on...
We, we certainly will.
I, I guess, is, if there's an issue at the barrier, do we have somebody?
So, so I think both of the concerns that you've heard are probably directed to the property owner, and I think some follow-up that we can do is to look at the permit for the building and understand what was supposed to be there. I suspect that that was part of the approval, so we can follow up. We can follow up on that barrier.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you so much.
Sure, sure.
And Christie, oh, I was just going to say, so I, I think also, I am aware of that cut-through spot to the animal hospital that Ms. McKenzie referenced, if we could also look at that, too, because, you know, if you look at a map, it's not there, but I know it's sort of there, so I don't know if there's an opportunity for signage, working with the landlord, landowner, property owner, or something, or there can be a physical barrier there, because it is dark, and I think it should be looked at, so.
Yep, that may be, we'll look at that related to the approval, and then also working with the property owner, it might be a collaboration between the two property owners if you were to put a barrier there.
Yeah, right, right, right. There may be a reason why that space is open, I don't know, but, but it's, it's not well-marked, so it leaves interpretation as to if it's supposed to be used by the general public.
Sure.
Yeah, I think if I understand it, the issue there is that for the animal hospital, that there is exit out behind the property.
Correct.
And so it sounds like patrons are coming out, going back in, and using that to not go down Route nine, but to get in the back, and that's, I don't know what the rules or regulations, but yeah, something we should look at to, to answer those concerns. Again, it's more a landlord thing, not for you, your business, or...
Yep.
In some, really not related to the billiards per se, but I think they're good, there are issues we should look at.
Is, is the back entrance actively used by patrons and employees for the animal hospital?
Yes.
Not to Ms. McKenzie?
I'm sorry.
Is, is the back entrance to VCA actively used by employees and patrons? The one off Oak Street?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can I answer?
Yes. So first of all, thank you very much for being this way, I'm very supportive of, of the players, I love playing pool, I think it's a great pastime, and I'm really glad to see Mrs. Dot, Mr. and Mrs. Dot here, as, not in a butter, but very close to that piece of property, I live on Chauncey Circle, so just Oak Street, go around the corner, I'm a few hundred yards down the street, I drive down that road all the time, and I would like to echo, and anything you can talk to at the landlord, we certainly will do through our process as well, but that fence on the backside is, it's falling down, and if I was, I'm not, I, I can see why the Dottas are, are not happy with that, because the parking lights just come right through across the street, I mean, we can actually see them flooding in all the way to our house, and, you know, cars going around and whatnot, so I think it's something that certainly should be addressed, and I support that. I would not support any sort of exit from that parking lot onto Oak Street, because I think that would just invite additional traffic. And I completely empathize with Mrs. McKenzie in regards to the VCA and people coming through there all the time, I see it happen all the time, whether they're trying to get to Chengdu, or coming back around from Tanca, or just missed a turn, you know, and they are trying to find a back way back around. So I see it happen all the time, so thank you all for coming tonight.
I, I just have a question on hard of hearing. Did you mention the fact that people cut through the fence?
Yes.
Yes.
To take and get around, all right? Because that's a, that's a big problem, and if they could be doing it late at night, that would be even more of a problem.
And I think that in the case of VCA, and I know we're kind of a little off-topic here, but, you know, that parking lot, you all have put speed bumps a, a, back there to prevent or to slow down the speed, which I think is also a preventative measure to hopefully stopping people from using that as the cut-through. That's great, I think as a landowner, property owner, you've done probably everything you can to, you know, minimize that, and it's just still being done.
Right, well, well, thank you, Mr. Thomas, for coming forward, I think these changes aren't under your purview as someone just leasing space, but we appreciate you taking the opportunity to come here and make us aware of the situations with that building, so thank you very much. Somebody will follow up.
I just have another question, just in our package, and I shouldn't have said sooner, but it looks like in the permit, we may have a, a couple of typos already confused.
Somehow, when we put the PDF together and format it, it's funny, but I, everything that Mr. Thomas submitted was perfectly fine, and I have it to share with everyone if you want to see.
Okay.
I'd ask Christie the same.
Yeah, so can we get the, now you get the Jeep dealership that's in there as well, so I just wanted to, okay.
I was like, that's a coincidence.
You want to own a Jeep dealership, too? Yeah, with, with billiards tables, okay, so that's okay, that's, that's perfect, so I have no other questions.
Yeah, and so just to be clear to the, the public who, McKenzie... Yeah, and so just to be clear to the, the public who, McKenzie's and Dada's, who came forward, so our town manager will follow up with our billing commissioner and, right, in the town, the planning, planning department, okay, regarding your concerns, okay? Yep.
I'll make a motion?
Sure.
I move to issue the pool table license for Four exclamation point Golf Entertainment at 153 Turnpike Road for two pool tables with a licensing fee of $100 per table.
Second. All those, this is a public hearing, so yes.
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Kyo, yes. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Good luck with the business, too. Thank you.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Kyo, yes. Thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And with that, if I have it correct, we move to issues and correspondence of the select board, including but not limited to upcoming event dates, local achievement acknowledgements, board committee liaison reports, and requested future agenda items. Anyone care to begin?
I'll begin with a fun and light one. I want to thank Mark Silverberg, the community around West Street, and DPW, and others involved for rescuing, did you hear about this? A baby duckling who got into one of the storm drains, and threw a hose and some help and some crowding. Mama and her babies, or other kids were chattering away evidently, that alerted the neighbors, and they flushed the duck, duckling out, and it was rescued. And it was, it was actually, I saw it on Facebook, and I, I just, it made me smile in this day of sometimes things that don't make me smile, and I want to thank folks for, you know, for rallying around the duckling and for doing kind of the little things that that matter and make Westboro a great community.
Mark said that it was one of the greatest days of his life.
He was glowing.
He was glowing, yes. He was excited.
If only Westboro TV had been there.
All right.
It'll be a Netflix documentary.
I, I do want to say, Ian, are you going to talk about Eagle Scouts? I don't want to steal your.
No.
So, so congratulations to the most recent awardees of the Eagle Scouts. Their ceremony was held over the weekend, I was not able to attend, but congratulations to a phenomenal achievement, so, thank you. That's all.
I have nothing.
If you're going to mention Memorial Day Parade, I have nothing, so if someone else wants to mention that, and I have nothing to add, so.
Go ahead, Byron, chief.
So just for the public, Memorial Day Parade, annual town event this coming Monday, of course, on Memorial Day. With the parade really starting from Baxter Street going into Pine Grove Cemetery, and then through town, there are some other ones up at St. Luke's that attend by bus, but really the parade aspect of itself really starting in the downtown area. It's just, again, a great event, and I think it will begin downtown around 10 o'clock, I think, is that the?
11 o'clock. The downtown ceremonies, I think, begin.
No, but the parade itself, I think, starts at 10.
Yes.
By there, and then it should be, finish across the street with the cer, with the big part of events at 11 o'clock, but really events within Pine Grove, at Midland, Downtown Road, and then up, up here. So just encourage everybody to come, I know people know about it, great event, and look forward to it, as always. Thank you, man. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A couple of updates in my role as liaison. The RFP process for Three Baylor Avenue is moving forward. We're past the questions period, and we had a number of great questions come in, and I want to thank town staff across a number of departments for assisting and providing information to feedback to the bidders. It's very, very helpful in getting the information back out there. And so at this point, we'll be finalizing answers to any outstanding questions by the end of this month, and the RFP responses are due June 9. Schedule, the schedule will be opened, you know, opened that morning, and then the trustees will start evaluating the responses. The exciting news is there have been 17 entities that have pulled the RFP. We believe that 12 or 13 have taken a serious look at it, and so we are expecting, our research says we should be expecting a couple of good bids. We don't expect 12 bids, but we don't expect just one, so somewhere in between is good. Of course, my screen just went dark. The other thing is, the board will remember that back in April, we had an agenda item that was passed over related to fireworks, that the Spirit Committee was looking to organize in conjunction with the Fourth of July celebration and the block party. And speaking with the chair of the Spirit Committee, they're at this point not planning to move forward with the fireworks for this year, but will be looking at it for next year. And so the community is aware, this is actually a very complicated situation. People will remember that for the 300th celebration, the town received a one-time and very definitely terse and worded one-time-only permit to use Lake Chauncey and the area around it because of wetlands and wildlife protection. The committee has been looking at a number of locations in town that the fireworks company said would be viable as far as safe, generally safe, but also where you could then have enough people to visit and view them and view them well. Some of those would require review by conservation and potentially mass DEP because of the location. Others were determined to be probably too close to homes. It's not, you don't worry about the display, you worry about the one that misfires, right? And no, no celebration is worth having someone's house on fire. Don't want to deal with that. Additionally, viewing areas, we're going to, would involve not only public areas, but privately owned property, and some of that property has changed hands, the new owners arranging permission, dealing with the liability insurance. And probably the biggest challenge is traffic and crowd management. The number of people wouldn't just be hundreds or from Westboro, but as more communities have discontinued fireworks, we would expect potentially thousands of people into Westboro. I know that Milbury no longer does their, I'm not sure if they're back this year, but they stopped doing theirs in part because the park where they did it overflowed, and people were parking in residential neighborhoods and blocking made roadways, and even at some points, you know, cars on 146 on the highway stopping to watch. It became a public safety issue. If we were looking at 3, 4,000 people coming in to the downtown area to look at fireworks, we'd have similar issues like that. And so the logistics are just extremely complicated. The committee's been working hard with the support of town departments, but just not enough to get everything in place in time. So they're going to take a step back and look to do it, look to do it next year. And I want to thank the committee for their effort and their work, and for the town departments for their assistance on it, but it's just not going to come to fruition this year. So that's the update.
Thank you. All right, I just have one thing. So unfortunately, I regret sharing this with folks, that our economic development director, Zach Bonner, has accepted an opportunity with the city of Cambridge. I want to thank Zach for all of his hard work for the town of Westboro. Zach has accomplished much in his time here, and I am grateful to him. He has set a high standard of performance for those who seek that position. Zach, thank you, and I wish you all the best. Cambridge is lucky to have you. With that.
I'll give you a motion.
Thank you.
All right, I move to enter into executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Police Chief Jeff Laurie, under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the firefighters' union. The chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's bargaining position. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, enforcement of fence removal at 7 Cedar Street, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position. Under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westboro Lax Media LLC and Lax Media Massachusetts LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA Number 2285 CV01281, if the chair declares an open meeting, meaning may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westboro versus Westboro SPE LLC, Worcester Land Court, 19TL 000768, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE 129 East Main Street, Town of Westboro versus Westboro Retirement Residents LLC, Worcester Superior Court, Docket Number 2185 CV00292, if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. And under Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 1500 Union Street, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. And under Mass. General Law, 38, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of May 9, 2023.
I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental, detrimental effect on the board's negotiating, litigating, and bargaining position. The board will not be reconvening in an open session after the executive session. Can I get a second to the motion?
Second.
Roll call, vote?
Johnson, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Welch, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Kyo, yes. Tonight, everyone, thank you, Westboro TV.